Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November the 6th, 2023, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. I now call this meeting to order, and I will call on Commissioner Veronica Jones for the invocation and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you. We thank you for this day. We ask that everything be done in decent and order. We ask for prayers those are overseas and all throughout the United States. God, we ask again that the decisions that we make will be that for the greater good of our community, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. November is National Diabetes Awareness Month, so we want to make sure everybody checks their A1C and do everything they need to do to make sure they stay healthy, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
All right, at this time, we have our recognitions, and I would like to call to the podium Ms. Joyce Dunlap from the Department of Social Services. This is presented to Ms. Joyce Dunlap from Social Services of Recognition of Outstanding Service to the Citizens of Cumberland County from February 21st, 1996 to June 31st, 2023, initiative from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. The DSS hated to see her leave. They wanted her to stay, but she put her time in, so congratulations. And I would like to ask that. Would you like to say anything?
It was a challenge.
But you made it through, right?
Yes.
Okay. She's probably done. You're done?
Yes.
Okay. Take a picture with...
Ninety-six, okay. We thought you said sixty-six. You're like, "Hey, forever."
Probably feels like if you go ahead and shake everybody's hand around. And then we're going to get a picture? Thank you. These guys too. You can come right here.
She must go come all around. For that being, you can do what you want to. You can do what you want to.
Thank you.
And this Dunlap, if you could stand right here and take a picture with everyone. Thank you for your service, and you can come back anytime. And now, if we can have the beautiful Ms. Tammy Gillis. And this is presented to Tammy Gillis of Administration and Recognition of Your Outstanding Service to the Citizens of Cumberland County from November 25th, 1991 to June 30th, 2023, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you'd like to say anything.
This is a great thirty-one and a half year.
Thirty-one and a half years.
This year's been amazing, right?
This year, yes.
I know.
Tammy, that's half my life.
It's half mine, too. Yeah, I did.
Thank you.
All right, was that my graduation?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I must say Tammy has the best office on the fifth floor. She does. She absolutely does. At this time, we will move to the approval of the agenda. Manager Greer, are there any changes to the agenda?
There's only one change to the agenda, Madam Chairwoman. Item closed session eight, closed session. We need to add item C, Attorney-client Privilege.
Okay, if I can get a motion of the agenda with the addition of the closed session.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We will now move on to a presentation. Manager Greer, if you would introduce the item and the presenter, please.
Yes, the first presentation is the American Rescue Plan and Special Projects Dashboard. Ty Voight, Chief of Staff, will be presenting this item. We go start displaying information about American Rescue Plan, which Ty handles for us in a little different manner on the website and on our internet. Ty?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning, Ms. Ball.
So, as Manager Greer said, I wanted to present some information this morning regarding the American Rescue Plan, our dashboards, and also the dashboards for our special projects, those projects that are made possible by the American Rescue Plan. And with that, some simple but major, I think impactful, updates to the county website. So, the first thing I'm going to start with is our main page of the county website. Today, what you will see is there will be a little bit of a change in the tiles on the front of the first page of the website. You will see a new tile there for the American Rescue Plan dashboards. And so, we have an American Rescue Plan page now, but it is difficult to find because of where it's... I don't want to use the word hidden, but it's hard to find right now. And so, to make that more accessible, there's going to be a tile on the front. The first page of the county website.
I think Commissioner Adams changed.
So, with that, also on the main page, when residents click on the departments toggle, currently to access the American Rescue Plan page, you have to click on the Board of Commissioners' title and then toggle down and go to the toggle that says American Rescue Plan. Today, you will see a change there. We will take that from up under the Board of Commissioners tab, and we will create a new departments tab that says American Rescue Plan. So, alphabetically, that will end up being the first toggle on the page. And so, that's an effort for us to make this more accessible to our residents. When you go into the American Rescue Plan page, the first page that shows up looks like this. Currently, you see the four main toggles. There's some information up under that. There's information up under this, but this is the part I want to talk about. Right now, you see a tab for small business, reports, and community meetings, and also nonprofit assistance. Technically, nonprofit assistance is one of those programs I just talked about, which is like a adjacent program made possible on American Rescue Plan, but not an American Rescue Plan program itself. And so, it will still be there, but we're going to change the location of that. This will be replaced with a tab that says dashboards. And when you click on that, it will take you to the American Rescue Plan-specific dashboards. So, when you click on that, the first thing you'll see come up is a dashboard that says ARPA dashboard. This is the landing page or the main page, and it shows the overall information for all American Rescue Plan projects. This, of course, is an image, but this can be manipulated, and you can drill down on this. You'll notice four main sections here. The adopted budget section, you'll see, it looks like a gas gauge there. You'll see those will be in either one of three colors. They'll be in green, which means complete. They'll be in blue, which is what, it looks purple right now, but blue. This is what is currently in progress. And then, there will be some that are in orange or a dayglow orange, yellowish color. Oh, oops. There we go. That means the project is not started for budgetary purposes. So, the project may have begun, but there have not been any impacts to the budget yet in our financial system, and that's why that will be in orange. You'll also see in the budget section, it's broken down by adopted budget, cumulative expenditures, and then also remaining available budget. On that same dashboard page, if you scroll down, you'll see three more subtitles. You'll see project subcategory expenditures, and those are the expenditures that are related to the performance measures. So, for example, you'll see in a few moments, we have a small business program. With that small business program, there are expenditures. They're overall just general expenditures, but you can also see, for example, the main purpose of the small business program is to track FTEs across these businesses. And so, there you would see the expenditure category, what those went to, like payroll, occupancy, those types of things. And then, you'll also see individuals assisted, which are those individual people that were impacted. So, again, like small business, those would be your FTEs, your full-time equivalent employees. How many of those people were impacted by the use of these funds? And then, you'll also see a report table. That report table is there to mimic or to show what is on our quarterly project expenditure report that we submit to U.S. Treasury. So, same page, you'll notice up there circled under filter by project name, project completion status, and adopted budget by project. This, again, is a main page, and so, if you want to drill down and look at a specific program, you can do that. You would just need to click on the project name and click on, for example, small business, and then it would show you specifically the small business program and those performance measures that are specific for that program. So, been talking about this one. The small business assistance dashboard is actually going to be a separate dashboard on the same page, but we elected to extract that from the main page because it has a lot more information in it than some of the other ones, because this is a project that the board and by extension, the American Rescue Plan Committee has really championed. Again, you'll see the adopted budget, expenditures, and cumulative available. And then, you'll also see under FTE, phase one and phase two. You see numbers there. Those are how many employees have been impacted or retained by the use of these funds. And then, of course, under the table, you'll see a project, the business's name, the type of business, which phase they receive funding in, and then you'll also see where their funding went and how many employees they retained by way of the program. Another separate dashboard, this is the second separate one from the American Rescue Plan, is the FTCC Hope Programs. That's the Hope Program that FTCC has created in order to assist in the job market with those trade positions, those trade fields. They are required through their sub-agreement to submit a quarterly project recovery report. And so, in that, they give us a status update of where they are and what they're doing. And so, this project is based on the first quarter. We have recently received the second quarter expenditure, and so, that will be updated to reflect the second quarter expenditures here as well. The last thing I wanted to mention is the Special Projects Dashboard. And so, you heard me mention that there are some projects that are, I call them adjacent to ARPA. And so, we had two funding categories in ARPA. That's the revenue replacement as well as the pre-pandemic employment. Those, that funding was American Rescue Plan funding, but allowed us to create a free-to-capacity within the general fund, which allowed the American Rescue Plan, and of course, by extension the board, to take on projects that are outside of the criteria or regulations for specific ARPA projects. And so, the same setup is here with these dashboards. These are programs, for example, like the hotspot program that you all awarded funding to, the library, the Community Paramedic Program, the NARCAN Program, the AED Program. Those types of programs are included in this funding category. You'll also be able to drill down and look at the project descriptions as well as the adopted budget. And so, residents will be able to read what these programs are specifically and what the goal and overall impact of the project is. And it's the same concept here that you saw in the first dashboard for American Rescue Plan. You'll see that you can click on select project name, project completion status, or adopted budget by project to drill down to a specific program. And the same naming conventions are here. And so, again, if something's in green, it's completed. If something's blue, it's in progress. And if something's in yellow, it's not started for budgetary reasons. It may have started, so doesn't mean the program's not underway. There just have not been any expenditures to the program. So, wanted to clarify that again. And that's what I have. This will be active on the website today, but wanted to let the board view this before it went live, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that allows us to see, the public to see what's out there, where money has gone to, but my question is a little different. The businesses that have been awarded, is there anything on there that will allow people who have submitted an application to know what's needed in order to be approved? That's one question. Is there anything on the website that say, "Oh, I want to apply for this. What do I need?"
So, the dashboard itself would not explain what needs to be approved. What we've been doing, we just recently had one about two weeks ago for the nonprofit program. We've actually done information sessions specifically. And so, just very briefly to summarize, when the application went live for small business, we did a webinar. And so, that webinar was live, but we allowed people to basically put their questions in the chat. They weren't able to speak or be seen, and so, we did it that way. Because at that time, we didn't know who would be approved or that type of thing.
Right.
So, since then, what we've done is folks who have been approved, we've done actual live sessions with them, and so, those are sessions where you can see the person, they can talk, ask freely. And we thought that would be really helpful to them, because a lot of times, folks call and ask the same types of questions. And so, I think it's beneficial for them to be able to hear someone ask a question that may be their question and hear it live. And then, what we still do is after that session, sometimes, you know, I'm not perfect, and I may say something, or I'm not sure, because I don't have the information in front of me. And so, what we do is we compile all those questions, and at the end, we will formulate a frequently asked questions page and post that to the website and as well send through email to them.
Okay. The last time that we approved some small businesses was when?
In September, sorry, September.
In September. Where do those, where do they stand now? Because I had some people that were approved, and one company said, "I didn't know that I needed something else."
Sure.
And they didn't, they don't know what they don't know.
Sure.
And so, that's why I asked if there would be some information on there. They're saying that this is required, because there's some basic things that are required.
Yes, ma'am.
So, where does that stand now for those who have been approved already?
So, we just finished putting through contracts for the nonprofit program, and so, we've sent all of the scopes of work, so that may...
I mean, for the small businesses?
For the small businesses, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, for the small business, we've sent the scopes of work to County Legal. They're going through those now.
Okay.
And so, we've already started to receive those. I don't want to misspeak, but I want to say about 10 or 11 have already been sent out to the small businesses. In that, they also received a conditional award letter.
Okay.
In that conditional award, it talks about things that may be needed specifically for their program. And then, of course, I always take calls, and then Siobhan McLamb takes calls as well and emails. But I think what would be most beneficial is what I said before. We're going to go ahead and set up that information session and take those live questions, because a lot of times, it's something that's simple, but if it's not done, we can't move forward.
And how are they notified that there's a live session that's getting ready to take place?
So, they'll be, so the folks who have been awarded funding will be contacted through email, and then they basically RSVP through that if they have so many days to RSVP. If we don't hear from them, we will try to reach out another way, just to make sure that they're truly either didn't get it or they're not interested, for example. We make sure they get it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ty.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I have one change. I omitted one change to the agenda that we need to add on. Appointment for the Alliance Health Board under seven, item seven, and it would be seven B.
That's an appointment? Was there nominations?
Well, nomination. I'm sorry.
Okay, it is nominations.
Okay. Want to go back and do a motion to add Alliance?
I have a question.
Mr. Commissioner Keith?
Yes. The appointment of Alliance, is that a position that is specific to a particular body, or is it an at-large position?
It is an at-large.
At-large.
Okay. Is there any nominations out there?
Yeah, we have. We're going to bring one forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're going to bring, well, we're going to bring one forward.
Commissioner Booth?
I move to amend the agenda under six D nominations and add a position on the Alliance Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We will now move on to our public hearing. Manager Greer, if you would explain the Board of Commissioners' procedures for public hearing, please.
Yes, arguments by the proponents and opponents may be, shall be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes for each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the three-minute time is attained. Rebottals will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairwoman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side.
Okay. Manager Greer, if you would, we'll have our public hearing for item 4A, closure portion of King Road. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a portion of King, formerly King Road. It's been taken off of the NC DOT's state system now, and that information was provided to the board at your October 16th, 2023, meeting. All the petitions of the owners, all the owners that are joining this little portion of that road filed petitions requesting it to be closed. They all have contracts to sell their properties to a commercial developer, and there's going to be a commercial development put in that area. The last thing for the board to do, if it wishes to do this, you've held the public hearing, and there is an order in your package that I recommend that the board adopt that order. It contains all the statements of fact, and that information is all stuff that's either presented with this order now or was presented to you on October 16th. And I find, I found that all the statutory requirements for the board to close this portion of that road have been met. I did point out that the publisher's affidavit for the notice that was advertised is not available now, and in the past, what we have done is I did put in the schedule of advertising with the observer. And at the, I think, the first meeting in December, I will just put that on your agenda as an item of information so that there's a permanent record of it. Does anyone have any questions?
There'll be no questions. We're open up to public hearing, being that there is no speaker. We're called to public hearing. If I could get a motion, please. There are no questions. Any questions? Okay, if I can get a motion. You want me to read it? I will make a motion to adopt the attached order of closure to be recorded and the register of deeds. That's all this says? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
We'll now move on to our items of business. Manager Greer, if you would introduce the item and the presenter?
The item of business is consideration of adoption of the 2024 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting dates and agenda session meeting dates. Andrea Tedby, clerk to the board, will handle this item.
We only have a few meetings that we need to adjust, which would be the January meeting for New Year's and Martin Luther King. And then, there is a meeting in August for our agenda session, and I just, we have two options because there's a conference, and we usually have our agenda session. So, I didn't know if you wanted to move it to the Tuesday preceding the meeting or the next week in August. It'd be the sixth or the 16th.
When is that?
August.
Not the 16th.
The 15th.
It's Friday. You mean the 15th?
Yes, my apologies, the 15th.
But before we make a decision on that, the idea behind the agenda session is so the staff has time to put stuff on the agenda for the next meeting. So, if we move it to the 15th, it only gives a weekend, Friday. That's not, that's not really, it's not fair to the staff, so... Yeah, I would say, Madam Chair, I make the recommendation we accept the schedule confirming August 6th on the agenda session, Tuesday, August 6th on the agenda session, 2024.
And the January dates.
And the January dates that correspond with the holidays.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, I will call on Vice Chairman Adams for the nominations.
We've got nominations to the Transportation Advisory Board. There's four vacancies. The Transportation Advisory Board recommends Tiffany Neal for the Urban Transport Provider Representative, Kristiana Clifton for the Shelter Workshop Director Designee, I'll need to change that name to something else, Ross Howard, the County Planning Department Director Designee, Ashley Patterson, County DSS Director Designee, if anybody else has any other nominations. That will also take us to the Civic Center Commission. There are three vacancies. The Civic Center Commission recommends an exception to the policy and to extend the terms of the following members until January 1st, 202026. Shiva McNeil, Gregory Parks, Joe Gillis, Alexander Asapis. That would require a vote by this board to be able to do that. The attorney has provided a memorandum. Did you give it to everybody?
I sent that to the Civic Center Commission, because when they brought this up, there was some questions about it, but it's been passed on to this board.
So, and if you remember, this is where four to three, Shiva McNeil, Gregory Parks, and Joe Gillis, we extended theirs for a year the last time that we had a, that they were up, they were already had met term limits, and we extended them for a year to be able to work for another year. Now, they're asking until the end of the project. Part of the problem is that our policy, again, we have to, at some point, amend the policy, I think Rick said, as to consecutive terms, because the, what do you got? The legal requirement say you have to have staggered terms. So, if everybody comes off in 2026, you won't have staggered terms. Everybody be coming off. And so, that's where it is. I would, well, I voted no last time, so you know where I am on this. And I think that these boards and commissions, there are enough citizens in Cumberland County that can, enough citizens in Cumberland County to be able to do this. I think that everybody should have an opportunity to be able to serve on these boards, and so, I would not be in favor of this.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you. This has come up, it is certainly without, not without precedent that the board has taken this. I think what we're really talking about here is a unique situation. It happened when we built the Coliseum out in 1997. We are investing $131 million. This is a board that is a very strong board. I go to these meetings. They're very active. They know the process, they know the project, and they're all very engaged in this project, all of them. All of them have taken a lot of their own time, personal time, to make sure that this moves forward. So I think that it's prudent to keep the same people in line for the end of this term, for this term. I, I do accept the idea of the, the staggered terms and if there's something out there that we can do. But I would like for this board to cross the finish line with this, and they certainly deserve it. So I'd like to support this.
Commissioner Booth?
We, we don't, we don't have any follow-ups. This will make them have a decade. Three, then the followed three, the back-to-back, then the year extension, and now another full three terms. I'll give them a decade. That's, that, that is not the purpose of it. And every time we talk about it, we talk about, well, this is an exception to our policy. But we haven't done anything to actually limit somebody to two consecutive. There's always, they're going to have some expertise because they're currently on it. That'll, that'll happen at every single meeting. We'll say, you know, well, Fred's already been on this thing for the past three years, so he's already up to speed. Well, he wasn't when he first came on. And so, you know, I, 10 years, I just, I can't do 10 years.
That's how long it took to get the crown.
I, I just agree with both commissioners. I feel like, you know, we have a lot of other qualified people too. So then if we continue with this, then every time a board turns around and someone gets involved with the, you know, with the project, then, I mean, how long is long enough? We do have other qualified people. I mean, we can go on and on, 10, 15 years. And then what's the point of other people applying if this is going to be how it's going to? You know, we can't talk about equality and fairness if we're not going to implement it. So I'm not in favor of it, you know, going on.
And I would tell you, it's a slippery slope. Because the hospitals go end up building a med school. So that's everybody on the hospital board asks for another term to stay on there the entire time till the med school is done. I, I think that 10 years. I think that they've served and they've served very well. But I think that that's why you have staggered terms, so that people are always coming on. But you have that historical data with it.
Commissioner Council?
I agree in part. But we're almost at the finish line for this. And I don't think anybody else has the knowledge and the battle scars that these people have. Well, we've had a lot of disagreements and whatever, and we've had to make a lot of exceptions. So pretty pleased, since there are at least two strong members on that team, could we just finish this project out? Mr. Attorney?
If you look at the, what I did with the memo to the commission, and that was hoping that they would kind of take that into account with, with their action. But the board, actually by statute, only has the authority to make appointments to this for three years. It's kind of gotten out of whack now with doing the appointment that was for a year that ran from March, March. It's so much so that in '24, you have four vacancies occurring. And in '25, you have five. The, the, the new statute, the last one that was done, does not require that a third of them be appointed every year like the prior two did. But it does require staggered terms. It does say that the terms of office are three years and until their successors are appointed for like terms. So what that means is if, to clean this up and get it back to staggered, leaving some one in for a whole over, not necessarily for three years or some time, but, but would, would be the way to get it back to three-year stuff. But that's what, the three things that I put out was the shortest way I could get it to work out for the existing members on there.
I actually disagree with Ms. Counsel. Because I look at this as almost like the beginning because of, of it and not the end of it. And so getting people on in the beginning, it just, it doesn't seem like it's the end of it. It just seems like it's the beginning for me. 10 years is, is definitely a, a long time. I understand, and as we, as the Board of Commissioners has gone through the newness and, you know, there's some value in having some, you know, some history. There's some value in having some, some history. But, you know, we still have to, it's not like they're the only people that have this, you know, that expert, not even expertise, the knowledge. Commissioner Booth?
When is the latest projected due date? Finish. Because what happens if, when is right now? When, when is the scheduled? Everybody come on in, it's ready. One of the, one of the people tells us, I know that's out there somewhere, but what is it this month?
It's December, the, before Christmas.
Oh.
This year, 2024.
No, it's not. The end of the project.
You mean next year, 2024, next year.
Yeah, 2025.
2025.
It's completion day.
2025, I'm sorry.
2025.
I got a budget date, somebody here right now.
Well, see, I was, I, I was willing to do one or two of them to get the staggerers as our attorney advisors or something like that. And, but I can't. Like I said, 10 years.
Commissioner Keith?
I, I just want to point out, everybody talks about 10 years, 10 years, 10 years. This board might remember that this project started 10 years ago. And it's taken 10 years of dedication and very hard work from a lot of people to get to the point we are here. Things don't happen overnight. And, you know, to, to the point of it beginning or the end. We always talk about celebrating people who do good work, and we give them plaques, and we give them accolades up here. But we're going to pull people out when they've put so much time and energy into this project. I, I, I see this as being, we seem to break the rules when it's convenient and not break the rules when it's not. This is, I, I can't see a better group to be moving forward. I am the liaison on that board. I see these people in action every day, and they are good, solid volunteers who are dedicated to this project. So 10 years, 10 years, 10 years, that's how long it takes to get where we are today.
Were they on the board 10 years ago?
Some, no, they weren't. He's, he's, he's.
I'm adding up what it would be.
He's adding up what it would be, what it would be.
Right, but you said the project started 10 years ago, so, but these are not the same people.
No, I'm saying that this project, this project started 10 years ago.
Exactly, so that's, that's what I'm saying. It started 10 years ago, and they weren't on there, but now they're on there.
It wasn't presented to them 10 years ago. It came from.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Madam Chair, I'm not trying to get in the weeds. I just want to acknowledge when everybody throws out 10 years, nothing happens fast in government.
Get it. Commissioner Jones?
I would just like to say, you know, we can't continue. I mean, all, all of our boards do a great job. Everyone's qualified, whether it's 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So I don't want to get into, my, my personal opinion is, I don't want to get into this. Well, everyone's doing great, so let's just make an exception this time. Because I'm sure that everyone else on the other boards feel the same way. And again, as Commissioner Glenn was saying, you know, we're going to run into the same problem with the trustees board. Everybody wants to stay on, but we do have other qualified individuals, just as to be honest. You know, we run for elected officials, we run for office, and sometimes we get reelected, sometimes we don't. But then, not trying to be rude, but the show goes on. So we do individuals that, just like, you know, Commissioner Stewart said, some people weren't here in the beginning. But we do have other qualified people. And we need to be able to give everyone opportunity, just as if I don't get reelected or someone else, I'm sure this board is going to run fine and be wonderful, and everyone on this board is great, just as they're on there. So we really need to, you know, look at that as, every time someone comes and says, well, I've been on here. It takes 20, 10, 15 years, is there never going to be a term? You know, we can't on one hand say, we want to be fair, hey, fill out applications, and your time's going to come. But then on the other hand, we'll say, well, that only means when a project finishes. It's either or, it can't be both.
Commissioner Adams?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we not extend the, the time and that this come on at our next meeting for nominations to the Civic Center Commission.
Is there a second?
A second.
That we not extend the, the policy as to these individuals. They've already term limited out. That will deny the Center of Cities Commission recommendation and that it be put on in our next meeting opened up for nominations to the Civic Center Commission, those three vacancies.
Commissioner Council?
I wish, since this is the only one we have at this time, and we have prayed about it for about 18 years, off and on. I wish we could go ahead with the new chairman, not the new chairman, the new, you're new.
County manager.
And, and finish this out and let Mr. Liaison work with the committee to tell them how we feel about it, starting over again. And I wish we would not do it this time.
Commissioner Booth?
I'm not going to be here to see it finish out. That's what I'm saying, if I just, can I just apply to the Board of Elections and say, I'm a year away from being able to see this? So I'd like to, I've been a part of this whole thing for the last eight years. So I'd like to extend my term on the Board of County Commissioners for another year. That's what I'm saying. I haven't, being consistent, I haven't voted for when we start getting crazy with the hospital board, folks. And I, I serve with them. I mean, I, I, and so I, they go in there, they go, I'd like to do this again. So would, so would these 15 people that we keep looking over. So, I mean, like Jeanette said, they're not going to let us continue. And Veronica said, they're not, I'd like to just get a free extension because we're about to finish the crown. I don't think they're going to let me do that. I mean, I just, the, the crown folks didn't, didn't contact me. These people didn't contact me, it just pops up. And the way I've done it. In fact, I think I got Jeanette mad one night because she was trying to get an extension on the Board of Health or something. And I voted against her, and boy, I'll tell you what, she, she came after me like, like she was, like she was 20. She got up and down them stairs faster than a 16-year-old kid coming after me. So I, I, that's what I mean, I voted against her on a board she loves. So, and I knew, and she came and asked me, and I went.
Did we take votes in nomination?
We got to deny theirs.
I know.
Okay. Put that now there.
Well, it's been, did you second?
No, Veronica did.
No.
Oh. Veronica, I would not second that much.
Okay, it's been moved improperly second to deny the nominations for the Civic Center Commission. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Booth. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Council and Commissioner Keith.
Okay.
And that will come on at our next meeting for nominations. So the manager added, it's not under appointments, it's under nominations for the Alliance Health Board. And that will, excuse me, allow everybody to make the nominations to the Alliance Health Board. But the nominee today is Ms. Heather Skeens. The Assistant Manager.
Heather.
Are we not doing local emergency?
Oh, Heather.
I'm telling you that.
I wondered who you were talking about, child. I thought you had thrown her out with me.
And then we've got nominations to the Local Emergency Planning Committee, two vacancies. The Local Emergency Planning Committee recommends Robert L. Godwin for First Aid Representative, Greg Phillips for Health Representative. Does anyone else have any nominations? Madam, Madam Chair, that would take us to the appointments. We have two for the Library, Board of Trustees, Dennis Getso and Pamela Story. I move that they be appointed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Missouri is on the.
Hospital.
Hospital.
It's been moved improperly second to appoint the before-mentioned. Is there, and it's been second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Council.
Okay. At this time, we'll call on a motion to go into closed session.
A motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 14331811A6 for personnel matter for NCGS 14331811A5 for rear property acquisition and NCGS for attorney-client privilege.
Eight-three. It's 425.
143.
Eleven-eight.
Eleven-eight-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Now go into. If I can have a motion coming to open.
I guess we would be, motion to come in to open session. I guess we are the closed session, we're in open session.
All those in favor? Yes, okay. And if I can get a motion for the resolution?
Mr. Keith, you brought it up.
Madam Chair, I would like for the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to, to present a resolution to our federal representatives that we are adamantly against the EPA decision to allow the Comores Company, the Comores to accept the, the Gen X residue from the Netherlands or any other country into our community. Therefore, I'd also like to ask that our resolution be sent to all the other counties that are in the affected areas and ask them to support also and send to the, to our federal representatives. Thank you.
Commissioner Keith, can we also do one to the governor? I mean, you got DEQ sitting up there, so.
Yes, absolutely. I, I think, any, anybody we can.
Second one, I don't want to do just a, a copy of the one that we got. But I think it's a separate one to go to the governor and all of them who said that they didn't know this was coming down the pipeline, so.
Yeah.
And, and we can, once we send that to the governor, is CC it to our delegation?
I'll second that you made the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Meeting adjourned.